Good to go.
Okay, great. This Greenfield City Council, March 17th, 2021, the 215th regular meeting, 7:00 PM. And we are meeting on WebEx. This meeting is being recorded and videotaped by the City Council in GCTV-15. If any other persons present are doing the same, you must notify the chairperson at this time. Okay, seeing none. Madam Clerk, may I have the roll call of members?
Counselor Jarvis?
Here.
Counselor Gwynn?
Here.
Counselor Disorder?
Here.
Counselor Bottomley?
Here.
Counselor Dolan?
Here.
Vice President Gilmore?
Here.
Counselor Wheeler?
Present.
Counselor Mayo?
Here me thus.
Counselor Herschel?
Here.
Counselor Elmer?
Here.
Counselor Elmer?
Here.
Thank you. Counselor Forgie?
Here.
President Ricketts?
Present.
And Counselor Stempel notified me earlier that she will not be able to attend tonight. Madam President, you have a forum.
Thank you. Okay, let's begin with the pledge of allegiance, and it's totally voluntary. Okay? I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, under God, indivisible, with liberty, just as for all. I just hear echoes. Thank you. Okay, at this time, I'd like to accept a motion to approve the February 2nd, February 17th, 2021 council meeting minutes.
Seconded, ma'am. Mayo.
Clerk, did you get who first and seconded that? Okay.
I got Counselor Mayo and Counselor Gwynn.
Perfect. All right, thank you. Communications from the superintendent of schools?
Hi, everyone, it's Amy, Chair of the School Committee. Dr. Hool has a conflict with us this evening and will be joining us definitely next year, or next month, for the first time, to introduce herself. I just have a quick report and then happy to take questions from any of you. So we are moving fast towards in-person learning for our students, beginning with April 5. The elementary students are scheduled to begin again in person, five days a week. This is at the order of the Governor and the Commissioner of DSE, Jeff Riley. Superintendent Hool, and the principals, and the other members of the leadership team for the district are working, I would say, 12- to 16-hour days, trying to figure out how we're going to do this. The schedules are staggered from the state, so the middle school students won't start until closer to the end of April and the high school at some point after that. One thing that has caused some confusion from families and some concern is that if they want to keep their children home for the remainder of this academic year, they can do that. There's no waiver to be applied for. They just notify the district that that's their intent, and remote learning will still be offered for any student preschool through 12, grade 12, that prefers the remote option. That will, we're told, not be an option in the 2021-2022 academic year, the begins of September. We're still waiting for more guidance on how that will all work. And then the second thing I wanted to update on is we do have a school committee meeting, a special meeting tomorrow night at 6:00, because we just can't get enough of the meetings. And we will be discussing, among a couple other things, the big reason for this meeting is actually to discuss some of the parameters for the superintendent search process and how that will work, and introduce the public to Liz LaFond from the Mass Association of School Committees, who will be helping us coordinate that search process for the new superintendent. So I encourage anyone to please join us tomorrow night for that, so you can get a sense of how the superintendent search will work. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions on any topic related to the schools.
Okay, thank you. Before I open it up to the counselors, Kathy, do you have a question?
Yes, I do. I'm sorry to interrupt. I lost some audio and video after the motion for the minute was made. Was there a vote on the minute?
No, there wasn't. I could say yes and just say that you missed it in the video, but I'll be honest, no. Okay.
Okay.
Let's take one step back. All in favor of accepting the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
And again, sorry to interrupt.
No problem, abstentions. Okay, does anyone have any questions? For school committee. And also, if anyone is, all right, one moment, Counselor Gilmore, if anyone would like to talk during public comment, please put your name and address in the chat box, okay? Counselor Gilmore?
I actually have a couple of questions, so if folks want to jump in, I'm happy to share time, so I'm not just dominating this whole thing. But I'm concerned, so I'm a parent, I have two kids who are still in the Greenfield Public School District, and I'm really concerned about their teachers and their educators coming back. April 5th is not far from now, and I know that there have been delays in the vaccine, so I want to know, what is our plan to make sure that all of our educators are vaccinated before the kids come back?
The first thing I would say to that is, we cannot require any educator to be vaccinated before they return. That's, we just can't do that. And the second thing I will say is that there've been some opportunities for clinics already for vaccination, coordinating with the city. There are a few more that are coming up, and there also has been a push amongst the teachers themselves to work together to secure appointments. I heard anecdote last week about teachers at the high school that were teaching from their classrooms remotely, but in person in their classrooms, and a bunch of them had all banded together, and by the end of the day, they all had vaccine appointments. We will do whatever we can to support the vaccination piece. What we have heard also from the city, and I don't want to overstep what the mayor or others might report tonight, but my understanding is, right now, vaccine supply is about 25% of what we actually need to do the vaccinations, even of folks who are in the groups that should be getting vaccinated right now. So the real issue is, is not that we don't want to get them vaccinated, but we don't have the supply. And what we are also pretty much mandated to do by DSE is follow their timeline, and their timeline does not include all teachers being vaccinated by that point. It's not ideal, but that's how I would answer your question.
Do we have like a ballpark figure of like how many of our educators we expect? Like, if you could give me like a rough estimate of how many, like what percentage we expect to be vaccinated?
No idea. I don't know how we would determine that.
I know this isn't the school committee, I know this came down from on high, but my concern is they're talking about three feet distance for kids, which, you know, we've all been told six feet this whole time. And I know my oldest son is a senior, and he's on the football team. He went to practice two days, and on the second day, I was contacted because one of his teammates tested positive. And I feel like if this is outdoors for two hours a day, for two days, I feel like what's going to happen when they're indoors all day? And I know that there's not necessarily, like, I know that this is not locally controlled, but I just want to know, what are we doing as a city to make sure that we don't have people spreading the virus and putting our educators in danger, and sending their kids home to grandparents or, you know, parents?
All we can do, I mean, all we can do is follow the same guidelines that are outlined for everyone. It makes no difference if you're in a school, is hand washing, social distancing, masks. And we are, we would like to have the six-feet guidelines, that's the CDC guidelines, for desks, for example, for social distancing. However, the state guidelines are three feet. We are in a tough situation, and this, just like every step of the pandemic and the guidelines that have come down, these are no different. They are influenced greatly by political sway and political opinion. And what we are doing is doing our best to make sure that we are following guidelines to the best of our ability in the district and able to keep our funding, because it doesn't take long to see that if you don't follow the guidelines, there's a risk that you would lose funding. I think likely Vice President Gilmore, you and I personally have a lot more in common around this than it might seem from my answer, but my personal opinion right now doesn't matter. We are kind of, you know, we, on the school committee, are creating the leadership that we need to be able to do what we've been instructed to do by the state. And thank goodness, there is indication that both municipal and public school funding is coming in a, what I would say, maybe a second wave or a third wave, depending upon how you look at the funding we've received so far. And we're just going to do the best we can with the information we have, the science that we have, and the support we have from our educators and from the community, and that's, we're making the best of the situation. And I will remind you and everyone who's listening that if there's a reason that your family, for any reason, for your children, doesn't feel safe returning, the remote option will remain open for this academic year.
Thank you. I do appreciate that, and I know that this is not something that was decided here in Greenfield, or even in Western Massachusetts. But I do have some other questions. I know that there was an article in the Recorder that a lot of us read recently. I'm kind of curious how the school committee is handling that issue with that person from, there was a firm that was hired, and I don't want to name the name, but there was someone who was asking for HIPAA-protected information from our educators, asking to have access to their medical providers, so that they could speak to them about whether or not they needed to be able to come back in person. And I want to know, how is the school committee handling this to make sure that, number one, it doesn't happen again, and two, make sure our educators won't feel like they're being bullied into sharing their personal health information?
I don't think that with this being a grievance that was filed, I'm sorry, there's a lot of background noise, and I'm having trouble hearing.
I need everyone to mute right now, because people are moving around. And it's, mute your computer, please. Okay, go ahead, Chairperson Proetti.
Okay, thank you, yes, that's better. My understanding is that the teachers' union has filed a grievance against us regarding that situation, that I cannot comment further because of the grievance. What I will say related to negotiations with the teachers' union is they are ongoing and moving forward, and any details or specifics, I'm not prepared to comment on.
Okay, that's fair. I just want to, I just kind of want to do my due diligence. So, but as far as like what this person is, the role that this person is playing in the town, I'm, I know that you briefed us last month, and I'm a little unclear, because I know that we had, I know that we had hired someone to come in as the business manager, and then was this like a separate RFP? Or is this kind of like an a la carte sort of service that they're providing to us, where we're getting?
I'm really not, I'm really not sure what you're talking about. You're talking about our business manager, which is Andy Paquette. He is the owner of a consulting company called TMS.
Yes.
I'm not sure where you went after that. You have to, I'm not sure what your question is.
Right, so I know that, we had an RFP so that they would provide us with some business management services for the town, and then there were some additional services that were added on, and I wasn't sure if that was like a separate RFP, or if we have some sort of an?
No, it doesn't, it doesn't need to be, no, it doesn't need to be, because the original RFP for the services of TMS includes expansion of any additional services under that contract.
Okay, and so he was the person who was hired to replace the business manager? Because I was under the impression that there was someone else, and then he came in later. Who was it that came in later?
Again, I'm not sure what you're talking about. Andy Paquette has been our business manager since May of 2020.
Okay, so Superintendent Hool was the one who was added later? I'm just trying to understand.
Superintendent Hool, Superintendent Hool is also an employee of TMS. TMS is providing us with additional services beyond the business manager. The contract that we entered into with them for services, when we did the RFP for the business manager, included an expansion of that contract to provide related services, and that's how we brought in the superintendent, the superintendency services with Dr. Hool.
Okay, all right, thank you, now I understand.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Gilmore, do you have any other follow-up questions?
No, I'm all set, thank you.
Okay, any other counselors? Okay, so I'm just going to take one moment to say that I know you're trying to get them back in the building, and people are, you know, excited, or upset, or worried, but I just want to put out there that I've been seeing lots of posts out there for students that have made the honor roll lately, and I saw it in the paper. And there's parents that are just shouting out where their child is going to college next, and there's just so much positive. So in this one year of turmoil, I, there's just so much happiness and success going on as well. And I really just wanted to shine a light on that, and how proud I was to read in the paper and read the honor roll, to see the superintendent's choices. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you, President Ricketts. Our educators and our students really are making the best of the situation and excelling in ways we are very pleased to see and did not necessarily expect during a pandemic, that's for sure. So it's very, very heartening to see that our students can have success regardless of the remote learning in the less-than-ideal situation. I don't want to step on your toes, President Ricketts, but I'm wondering, it looked like Counselor Disorder put something in the chat that maybe she wanted to speak.
Okay, yep. Counselor Disorder? That's fine, thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you for all of the meetings and extra meetings that you've been having to get this job done. And a bit off-topic, but just brought up, I'd also like to speak to the heroic efforts of FurCog and all the team of vaccinators, mostly staffed by volunteers, who go in day after day to make sure that every person they can get to has a vaccine. They work till they can barely stand. And thank you for all you do, and thank you for all those people out there that are trying to get this job done.
Couldn't have said it better. Thank you, Counselor Disorder.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Disorder. Anyone else from council? Okay.
All right, thank you, thank you all.
Thank you.
See you next month, or maybe see you on Thursday. See you tomorrow night at our meeting, that would be great. Take care.
All right, communications from the mayor.
Hello there. Thank you, President Ricketts, and thank you, Chairperson Proetti, for your report. I took note of the fact that when Penny introduced the meeting tonight, she said it is the 215th meeting of the City Council being done on WebEx. Now, I have a feeling that 215 years ago, the word "WebEx" was like not even considered in the vernacular. So it's just a point to talk about the longevity of this very important meeting that we're at this evening, and the importance of the people who step up to do the job. So I want to thank all of them.
It was a fencing.
Okay.
I'm sorry, everybody mute again? I'm so sorry. Go ahead, Mayor.
I'm fine, I'm fine. So I think the topic tonight, among other things, was vaccination, so I'm going to give you a vaccine update, as I know it, as of about 5:00 PM this evening. So the vaccine clinic at the John Zahn Center has been operational since January. We have administered 5,300-plus vaccines just at this site since January. Today, we held a clinic that ended at 6:00 PM, and we gave 300 vaccines. I want to acknowledge the fact that some counselors who are on this meeting this evening have volunteered, and I want to thank you all for doing that. And I certainly want to encourage those people on the council to also step forward and volunteer. I don't run the volunteers, so I can't tell you when we need them, but if you just want to contact Danny Laterno or Chief Strahan or Health Director Jennifer Hoffman about volunteering, by all means, do it, because I think you will find that it is actually a very uplifting experience to do that. So I want to thank Health Director Hoffman and Chief Strahan and all the other people at the John Zahn Center who do run our clinics weekly. We have had spoke clinics run by our partners, the FurCog, so I want to emphasize again, I think I've said it many times, we are, this is a collaboration. We're all in this together, and the importance of getting Franklin County people vaccinated is what we are all about. So we have had vaccination locations at Cringle Candle in Bernadette, Treehouse Brewing, the old Channing Beach Building in Deerfield, Welcome to the Community Treehouse, Mohawk Trail High School, and the Franklin County Tech School, and we have vaccinated over 6,000 people in Franklin County. We only have, whatever it is, 17,000 minus 6,000 to go. That is made difficult by the supply. So there was a reference made, there was a reference made earlier to the 25%. A week ago-ish, we were told by the Department of Public Health that whatever vaccines we got, it varies sometimes between 500 and 1,000. We always order 1,000. We don't always get 1,000. But we were told that we, by the state, by the Department of Public Health, that out of that, only, only 25% would be given to Franklin County residents, and the other 75% had to be given to anybody in the state of Massachusetts who wanted to come here. And I don't have those details in front of me, but we will be releasing them early next week as to how many people outside of Franklin County we have also vaccinated. But the point of that is, there is, if equity is what they were after, equity doesn't reflect that, because we are with our volunteers and the money that the city of Greenfield is putting into this, subsidizing 75% of people who do not live here, or work here, or pay taxes here. So I have sent an email, I mean, sent a letter to Secretary Sutter's, along with Linda Dunn Levy of the FurCog, expressing our dismay about that, and I think there was an article earlier in the week about that. I have received a response from her. It was a quote-unquote "kind" response, not terribly helpful, but she did offer some assistance. So, but she did not change the number of the ratio. So I just want everyone to know the constraints under which we are operating when it comes to whether it's vaccinating teachers, or the rest of the people that work for the city of Greenfield, or what, whatnot, that we are operating under a supply constraint that is even further constrained by that ridiculous ratio of 25 to 75. And I'm working hard with our legislators to change that. I understand that tomorrow, no, not tomorrow, it's only Wednesday, Friday, we will hear from Secretary Sutter's on, as a regional collaborative, and I want to make clear that we are a regional colla, we are part of the regional collaborative, which in the grand scheme of how we're rolling out this is different than other. We are not a mass vaccination site in the same way that other people might think of it, but we are a regional collaborative, and we are doing the best we can. And I do want to thank the Franklin County Sheriff's Office, that has also partnered with us and has provided mobile clinics for congregate living and mobile clinics aimed towards teachers. So we are all truly in this together. But back to the issue of supply. I hope that changes, I think it will, but in the meantime, we are constrained by that. So I just want all of you who may be talking to your constituents out there to understand that we are doing the best we can with this. And frankly, we're doing, we are doing a great job. And I want to thank all the volunteers from all over the city of Greenfield that are helping with this, because it is foremost, it's the big job to get done right now. So with that, I can offer you a couple of fire station updates, for those of you who may not be watching every minute of the drama. We are on track as far as the fire station goes with respect to getting our temporary fire station in order. We have received all of our bids, and we have made choices for both the apparatus space and for the living quarters and the office piece. And we are on track with that schedule. We will have a temporary fire station up and running sometime between mid-August and the 1st of September. So I just want people to know that all of that work goes on behind everything else that goes on. And there's just a whole host of people that I can't thank enough for keeping our eyes on that prize as well. As a result of that, however, we will be closing the Hope Street parking lot as of April 1st to the permit holders. And they have all been notified by an email as of Monday, as I recall. And I just want everyone, you know, the mundaneness of running the city of Greenfield. This year, we made the change that all parking permit holders are eligible to park in any parking lot, permitted space in any parking lot in Greenfield. So if you bought a permit thinking you could only park in the Hope Street lot, that is not the case. I don't relish the fact that we took that offline, but it was the most economical way to approach the building of the fire. but it was the most economical way to approach the building of the fire station. And just to let you know, MJ Adams and I and many other people, including Chief of Staff Danielle Laterno, are working very hard on the reopening and the recovery of the city of Greenfield. So for that, preparations for outdoor dining season are underway and Director Adams is working on that. And she may be on this evening if you want to ask her some questions about that. But right now, that's, that's, I think, my report for the evening. And I, oh, to answer Counselor Gilmore's concerns regarding her son who is on the football team. I just, I want to make it clear that the athletic director did not speak with the Health Department about practices or any of those sorts of things. So if there was exposure, I feel badly about that. But certain processes that should have been followed were not followed properly. With that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Mayor. Counselor Mayo?
Hi, I'm, hi, Mayor. This question goes back to the vaccine and the report that you gave. First off, I want to commend you for, for all that you've done and all that you've been able to rally around the vaccine. And, you know, I've seen you at work. I've seen the work that has been done. I am concerned about the numbers that are coming out nationally because the president has come out and said that a certain number will be vaccinated by July and that businesses will be open in July and school will be definitely being started in the fall of the year. I'm concerned that, you know, with the shortage that we're getting here in Franklin County, that we're not going, we're not going to come close to those numbers of, of getting people vaccinated and, and having businesses open and things of that nature. Have you given any thought to that? Or, or is there anything that we can, we can do as counselors that can maybe kick that along and, and help out?
Well, thank you, Counselor Mayor. I share your, Counselor May-O.
Not yet, not yet.
I was gonna say, you never want to be counselor and mayor at the same time. I can guarantee you that. I share your concerns. It really is all about supply. And I'm going to take President Biden's word for the fact that he will begin releasing supply. But I have learned one thing, and that is, while I think I have a very good relationship with all of our legislative delegation and I do push them to push the state, it is ultimately up to the state to deliver the supply. So when I get a directive like I got a couple of Fridays ago with regard to the 25% piece, I do begin to wonder. But I, I have no hesitation whatsoever in either picking up the phone or sending an email to our delegation because, believe me, they are on it. So to the extent that we can influence the supply that comes into the county, what I don't get, and I, I've mentioned this often, is if they would just give us what we ask for, instead of we ask for 1,000, we get 400. We ask for 1,000, we might get at most 800. If they would just give us what we ask for, Franklin County, between all of us who are working together, would be vaccinated, both number one and number two. And then we'd be done and they didn't have to think of us again. But I don't understand, I don't begin to understand how the, those decisions are made. I will tell you that I do have a conversation with Secretary Sutter's in my calendar for next week. So I'm going to thank her for her offers of help and I'm going to push again for opening up vaccine to Franklin County, so.
That's what I'd like to hear. That's.
Just gonna say, I can only do what I can do. It helps to be able to pick up the phone and make that call, but.
It's always good to have a number.
And I, I just want all of you to know that our Western Mass delegation, in my case, consisting of Representative Mark and Senator Comerford have been very responsive. I do might have expected.
As a follow-up, would it help that we, as city counselors, contact our, our federal representatives?
By all means, with respect to making sure that Massachusetts gets all of the vaccine that they're asking for. But, and, and by all means, contact our Western Mass delegation and ask that Franklin County be considered in a, in the rollout in, in a more planful and more equitable way. I have pointed out to them that if, if this is their vision of equity, then it doesn't exist here. So.
Well, my letter will be in the mail tomorrow.
Good. Thank you. It helps. I'm sure it helps.
Okay. Thank you very much. Counselor Dolan?
Hi, Mayor Weigandner. I'll bet, I'll bet you can predict what I'm going to ask about.
I can. I'm working on it.
If you can give us an updated timeline on that zoning commission. I think we've been talking.
Are you talking about the CPA or are you talking about the zoning piece?
The zoning piece. CPA looks like it's moving forward.
Oh, yes, yes. I, you know what? I'm going to go there next, Tim. I, I really can't, I can't, I can't say that it is a priority. It's up on my bulletin board and I will get it done. And I have been in conversation with Director Torog about the nuances of the bill that was passed a while ago with regard to zoning and how it might affect it. So it's not as if, it's not being worked on. But I want that committee to get formed as much as you do because I think the conversation is important. So if you, if you want to keep pushing me via email or whatever, I, I don't mind that. I don't, I don't mind it at all. And if you have suggestions for people on the committee, I will tell you that it is difficult these days to find volunteers to do work. It seems that the same people who always volunteer, who, who care about the community are the same people who always step up. And, and that's fine. I understand that. I, I was one once. But I also believe that, you know, people who don't always step up should, should step up. So, you know, anything you can do to, to forward people to say, "I want to be on that zoning committee," I'm happy to have you do that. As far as the CPA is concerned, I, I, I have chosen two people. I know that people have contacted the mayor's office, but Penny and I are kind of working on that together. So if you weren't chosen, when you contacted, then I've passed those names on to Penny. So we're working on both of those committees to get them up and running. They're important.
Thank you. Counselor Dolan, do you have a follow-up at all or you're all set?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
I wish I could give you a better answer, Counselor Dolan, but it is what it is. Sorry.
Okay. Do any other counselors have a question for the mayor? Not seeing any. Mayor, I don't know if you have any other department heads you need to speak tonight, but if not.
I don't. There's a couple of items on the agenda. I haven't seen whether MJ has logged on yet to speak to 401 Liberty, but I know she was planning to. And I would just assume that I get off and stop talking and we hear from the public or whatever, whatever is on your agenda.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much. And so, Madam Clerk, because we have such a hefty agenda tonight, I really do want to just do three minutes for the public comment. We have lots to cover. And so let me start with the first person, Paul Jablon. Say your name and your address, please.
Hi, I'm Paul Jablon, 73A Fairview Street in Greenfield. I'm speaking to the suggested zoning changes that expands the tier in the whole RC district. When I speak here, I'm usually asking the city to spend money, money for our schools, the firehouse, or the library. Much to your amazement, today I am asking for the city to make some money. I hope you can support a change in the zoning of the rural residential district from Tier 1 to Tier 11 for cannabis farming. The proposal I saw for Leyden Road would be an outdoor, outdoor growing facility. This would keep the agricultural nature of our community and unlike indoor growing facilities, would not have a large carbon footprint by expending huge amounts of electricity. The current zoning is so unreasonable for any type of farming. It would only allow for an area about four times the size of my own home vegetable garden. That is not tenable for a commercial farm. The plot size requested would only be about two and a half acres. I used to mow a lawn about that big and it would not be visible from the road or neighboring properties. This is an opportunity for our taxes not to go up. 3% of the revenue from this farm goes directly to the city. It will be run by local farmers and have tremendous security. Polraine just allowed for two Tier 11 growing facilities. Greenfield needs to be competitive for this agricultural revenue. Here is another opportunity to literally grow local. It seems like a no-brainer. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Carol Letson? And anyone else that wants to speak, please put your name and address in the chat. Sorry. Go ahead, Carol.
Thank you. Thank you, President Ricketts, and thank you, everyone. I'm here to speak about the $350,000 that's dedicated for the city skate park that's on the agenda today.
I'm sorry. Just tell me your address.
Oh, okay. 29 Allen Street.
Thank you.
Yes. I'm speaking about the $350,000 that's on your list today for dedicated to the city skate park. I just wanted to talk about the history a little bit, and you've all heard about this, so I'll be very brief, that we did have a wonderful skate park. I remember it. And there has been a dedicated group of citizens who have worked hard over these years since the old skate park was taken down to hold public meetings, to create new ideas, to create plans and designs for a modern skate park for the Greenfield teenagers, children, and adults. And I just would like to speak in support of that $350,000 notation for the skate park. This appropriation will only be the beginning because once that appropriation is okayed, then there will be applications for grant funding in addition.
Okay. I'm not sure if she froze or if she's completed. Nope, here she comes.
What?
Carol, are you all set?
I, I've used about my three minutes. I can't tell what you're.
You still have just over a minute left, about a minute and 29 seconds. Your video was coming in and out, so.
Can you hear me? Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. I.
Ms. Letson, you've frozen again. We can't, we can't see you. Perhaps if you shut your video off and just try the audio, that would, that would help.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes, yes.
Okay, sorry. Oh, I'm just speaking in support of the $350,000 for the city skate park. We have waited many years and we're looking forward to going ahead and applying for grant funding in addition to this appropriation. And there will be a wonderful facility for our youth. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Carol. Sue Gaffnick?
Thank you. I am also, as you know, and most of you know, I've been working on the skate park for, feels like a longer time than probably is, but at least six years. And I, next, I know that this is first reading and that this will be coming up next month and I will be back to talk about skate park in more detail then. But I do want to explain why this appropriation is important. We cannot apply to the state without having a commitment from the community to be, as a match, to apply. So, and we only get one shot at it once a year. The applications generally go in in July. We're assuming that's going to be the case this year, though we still haven't heard. So if we do not have a commitment from the city through, through the council this year, we then are waiting another year. And every, it takes us about, according to the process that we have to go through, it's about a year and a half to two years to get the park finally developed. So for every year that, every time that that appropriation is not in there, it means that we have to wait another year to apply. And I want you all to understand that that process is what we're trying to deal with. I should also say that the community has already raised over $20,000 toward the skate park and we have several foundations that have expressed interest, but we can't go to them until we're ready to move. And, and all of them will ask us if there has been a town commitment. So with that, I just wanted you to have the lay of the land. Next week, I'll speak glowingly about the need for, next month, rather, for the, the need for a skate park. Thank you.
Okay. So it looks like you signed up twice, so that second one must be for next month. So thank you. Okay. Zach, please state your name and address.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. My name is Zach Poters. I live at 70 Riddell Street. I, I'm here to speak on behalf of a young man who wishes he could be here tonight. He's working right now, Gillis McDougall, who I've been working with on proposing a new project to the town. And that would be an incredibly low cost for a really high gain. And it's perfectly apt that right behind me are all of these circles, which are disc golf discs. Disc golf is growing immensely in the last year especially. And in our local area, we now have two courses that are within driving distance, which is really exciting that we can play disc golf and not have to drive more than half an hour, which used to be the case before these courses came along. What we don't have is an opportunity for young people in Greenfield to learn the sport in a place where they can go feel safe and get a chance to just play with their friends. In the past, I have been trying to make a project move around a full-size disc golf course, but instead, what Gillis and I would like to propose is a very small project that could cost under $5,000 to put in a nine-hole disc golf course somewhere in walking distance from downtown. We have some ideas about where, but we recognize that's down the road further. And it's a sport that gets people outside and active, and it can be played on a recreational level, all the way up to a professionally competitive level. And people are picking it up faster than ever right now. In the community in Greenfield is growing so quickly that any weekend, if you attend any of the nearby courses, the parking lots are full, you're running into all sorts of people locally and from beyond Greenfield who are coming to this area to play the courses we have. So we should get our kids an opportunity to be able to do the same. Thank you for your time this evening. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you.
Thank you so much, Zach. Rebecca King, your name and address, please. Welcome.
Okay, are you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. I live at 12 Minus Farm Lane in Greenfield, and I too would like to register my support for the skate park, for the council's budgeting, that $350,000 item. The angle that I'm coming from is that our kids have been through quite a year this year, and for many years, for the last six years since the last skate park was closed, they have not been a priority in this town in the way that I believe they should be. And I feel that this, this item, this, that would give them a future of having a community support them in something that has been traditionally a big item for them, a big way for them to gather, for them to be social with each other, and for them to have physical exercise. I think it would be a very important thing for us, a message for us to send to the kids and to their parents and to their friends. So that is why I'm speaking tonight, and I hope that you will vote on this. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Rebecca. Louise, your name and address, please.
Good evening. You can hear me?
Yes.
Okay. This is Louise Amio. I'm at 56 Madison Circle here in Greenfield. And I am also speaking in support of the skate park, setting aside the $350,000 for this. This is a project for, on which Susan Wurgaffnick and Benny have worked for a long time. And as Becca just said, and as Susan has said, there has been nothing for our young people to do here in town. And we, I think, have probably lost a generation already in the six years when there's been nothing. I think that our young people are long overdue to have a healthy, fun thing for them to do with friends. As Becca just said, it's a very important social opportunity, an opportunity to get outside, and an opportunity to be exercising as well, and creative. I think maybe those who really love it are going to Turner's Falls, and it's a shame that Greenfield has not been meeting that need. So I'm hoping that the community will agree to put aside that $350,000 and get started on creating the skate park for Greenfield. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Put your name and address in the chat. Seeing none, at this time, I'd like to close public comment. I just want to thank everyone who came for that. Okay, at this time, we will open a public hearing at 7:54. Counselor Forgé, could you read the public hearing?
Madam President, I'd be happy to do that, but before I do, I have to make a statement. There is an article on this agenda, public hearing and second reading, that I have to recuse myself from, and that is the Municipal Pension Stabilization Fund, because I do receive a pension from the city of Greenfield. As we did last night, I did have Counselor Bottomley act as the temporary chair so that we could introduce this, discuss it, and vote on it. And with your permission, I would like to have Counselor Bottomley provide the same service for us this evening.
Okay, duly noted. Thank you so much, and I believe that's the same for Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay.
Okay, I'll start the public hearing read here. Here we go. "In accordance with Home Rule Charter, the Greenfield City Council will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, March 17, 2021, at 7:00 PM at John Zahn Community Center, 35 Pleasant Street, or via Webex, if required, and it gives an email address to attend the meeting, to receive public input on the following: appropriate $16,500 from free cash to repair traffic lights, appropriate $20,000 from retained earnings to match the grant for Millbrook Well Generator." I will pause.
"Establish a municipal pension stabilization fund as authorized by Mass. General Law, Chapter 45B, and appropriate $1 million from free cash to the Municipal Pension Stabilization Fund."
"Appropriate $500,000 from free cash to the general stabilization fund. Appropriate $600,000 from free cash to the capital stabilization fund. Appropriate $300,000 from free cash to the contract stabilization fund, and appropriate $25,000 from free cash to the compensated absences fund. The City Council may consider the same on Wednesday, March 17, 2021, at 7:00 PM at John Zahn Community Center, 35 Pleasant Street, or via Webex if required, and the addresses listed. Materials can be obtained from the City Clerk's Office, 14 Court Square, from 8:30 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday, or phone 413-772-1555, extension 6163. Penny Ricketts, City Council President."
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Forgé, Counselor Bottomley. Okay, is there anyone in the public who would like to speak? All right, seeing none, I would like to close this public hearing at 7:58. Okay. So, second readings. Counselor Forgé, would you like to begin reading?
Yes, please, just for point of order, if I could. Am I to read the list, or am I to read the actual motion?
The list, please, on page 11.
Thank you. Perfect. "Appropriate $16,500 from free cash to repair traffic lights." Second reading, March 17, 2021. "Appropriate $20,000 from water retained earnings to match grant for Millbrook Well Generator." I'll pause.
Oh, shoot, I'm trying to find this.
Okay.
Page 11.
I got it.
Yep.
"Establish municipal pension stabilization fund as authorized by MGL, Chapter 40, Section 5B, and appropriate $1 million from free cash to the Municipal Pension Stabilization Fund."
"Appropriate $500,000 from free cash to the general stabilization fund. Appropriate $600,000 from free cash to the capital stabilization fund. Appropriate $300,000 from the free, free cash to the contract stabilization fund. Appropriate $25,000 from free cash to the compensated absences fund."
Okay. Thank you so much. Great tag team. Okay. So, next, motions, orders, and resolutions. So, first one would be, "Appropriate $16,500 from free cash to repair traffic lights." So, page 12, and could that order be read?
I'll start off, but I would like other members of our committee to be able to read as well. So, I will start off. Order number, fiscal year 21-056. "The City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Wiedergardner, and order to appropriate $16,500 to repair traffic lights, ordered that the sum of $16,500 be appropriated from free cash for the purpose of repairing traffic light safety issues. Majority vote required." Madam President, Ways and Means took this up at last night's meeting. There is documentation supporting this request in our packet. It was voted on by the Ways and Means Committee, and it was a unanimous decision for positive, you know, approval.
Madam President, we need a second on the motion.
Second, Jarvis.
Thank you.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions? Counselor Wheeler?
Thank you, Madam President. A question for Director Warner, if that's allowed. I was just wondering if one of the traffic lights that would have worked onto it was the one at Federal and Main, just because in my four years on the council, never have I heard more complaints than about that traffic signal.
I, I hope that I have the perfect answer for you, Counselor Wheeler. That, that intersection ties in with, at the bottom of Bank Row, Deerfield Street, and a lot of our issues have been timing issues at different parts of the day. So, when we went through the evaluation, at the, at the Bank Row intersection, we found two cam cards that were faulty, and there's one camera card on Deerfield Street that was faulty in the electronic package in the box. So, once we repair these, we're going to have the opportunity to have a lot of fun with the lights and keep playing with them until we can get some proper timing or, or acceptable timing out of them, let's say, at different parts of the day.
Thank you, Counselor Wheeler. My, my question exactly. Thank you. All right. Do you have a follow-up, or are you all set, Counsel Wheeler?
I'm all good. I could, I could have told you about the Deerfield Street problem, but I think, you know, we live with it.
We've received many phone calls also, so...
Okay. All right. Does anyone else have any questions on this before we vote? Madam Clerk, can I have a roll call vote?
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn? Counselor Gwynn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Vice President Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Herschel?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgé?
Yes.
Does the President wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
Unanimous positive, the motion passes.
Thank you. Okay. I was just going to say, before we get started, so if all the councilors just want to unmute, just learn to mute if you're going to cough or something happens in your house, but if you can unmute and stay unmuted, we can get through this, and it'll be great. So, go ahead. Counselor Forgé, you have the floor.
Okay, I'll read the next order, which is order number, fiscal year 21-057. "The City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Wiedergardner, and order, appropriate $20,000 from water retained earnings for Millbrook Well Generator. Ordered that the City, Greenfield City Council, appropriate the sum of $20,000 from Water Enterprise retained earnings as a grant match for the Millbrook Well Generator. Majority vote required."
Second, Jarvis.
Thank you. And Mayor, I mean, Counselor Forgé?
Got it, got it.
Ways and Means?
Yes, we, we took this, this up last evening. There is documentation for this. And it was a unanimous positive recommendation that comes out of committee.
Thank you. Do any councilors have any questions or comments? Seeing none, may I have a roll call vote?
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Vice President Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Herschel?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgé?
Yes.
Does the President wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Counselor Bottomley or Jarvis, whoever would like to...
Yep. I've got this one. Order number, fiscal year 21-058. "The City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Wiedergardner, and order to establish a municipal pension stabilization fund as authorized by Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 5B, and fund with free cash. Whereas, Chapter 40, Section B, 5B, provides for the establishment of one or more stabilization funds, whereas the city of Greenfield wishes to create a pension stabilization fund for the purpose of funding the future pension assessment schedule payments for the Greenfield contributory retirement system. The pension stabilization fund establishes, established as authorized by Massachusetts General Law's, Chapter 40, Section 5B, will be funded free cash in the amount of $1 million." Second, Mayo.
Thank you.
The rest of the motion needs to be read, please.
Oh, sorry. Motion, move that the city of Greenfield create a pension stabilization fund as authorized under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 5B, and that the city of Greenfield fund the pension stabilization with $1 million from free cash. Second, from Mayo.
Okay. Could I have the Ways and Means vote?
Yeah, we discussed this. It came back with a mixed positive. We had two in favor, one opposed, and two recused. I don't know if I'll be able to summarize this accurately, but the questions were whether this was the appropriate use of the funds, whether we needed this to put the money into a new fund, or just put it into general stabilization. So those were some of the issues that, that we discussed.
Okay. Do I have any questions or comments from any other councilors? Counselor Gilmore?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that for as long as I've been on the city council, I know this has been a priority, that I'm not sure if Liz Gilman is still on the call right now, but she's spoken to us about this a number of times, and how important it is that we get ahead of these costs, because these costs are going to balloon, not just expand, they're going to become more and more difficult as time goes on. So if we can get ahead of this now, it feels like the most responsible thing to do, instead of putting it off until the, the next time we talk about a budget.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, people are going to have to mute again. There's one person, and I don't know who it is, so... Did you, did you want her to speak to that, or did you want to...
I would be happy to have her speak to that. This is my recollection of the comments that she's made to us in the past. I'm happy to listen to her speak for herself, though. Good evening, all. So this order establishes the pension stabilization fund. I attached a retirement funding schedule that you can see is very aggressive over the next 14 years. You will see in 2036, it drops off. What's happening is it's been mandated that we fund... that we fund an underfunded pension fund over the next 14 years. And so we've received this schedule. In looking, I also attached incremental increases from year to year, so that you could see how much it's going up each year. And so what this does is assist us in managing over the next 14 years, all aspects of our budget. Retirement assessment, as debt service goes up and down, and health insurance, and just the normal course of increases over the next 14 years. And the other good thing about this is any amount into a stabilization is looked favorably upon the rating agencies. And we do have a lot of bonding coming up between the fire station and the library. So this will improve the standing of the city with the rating agencies. Additionally, that when we're through this funding schedule, this stabilization fund, and any stabilization fund, may be repurposed with two-thirds vote for another reason. You know, this could go to capital, it could go to general. So the point in this is to minimize, to have the ability to minimize a spike in the tax rate over the next 14 years, as this hits. Because there are a few years where it's more difficult, depending on the timing of projects coming on and off, as well as the individual increase of the retirement assessment.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Wheeler, and then Counselor Gwynn.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to speak in favor of this. From my time on Ways and Means, it became clear in all my conversations with Director Gilman that this was a priority, and as far as I see it, the most important use for these free cash funds that we have. I think $1 million is a good number. The retirement assessment generally causes the biggest increase to our yearly budget. And so it really, I think, would stabilize things to have this in our back pocket to guard against, especially years when we need it, when the tax rate is really going to get hit hard. So I think it's a good opportunity to do some long-term maneuvering and long-term thinking that we wouldn't normally have the opportunity to do.
Thank you. Before Counsel, I'm so sorry. Okay, Counselor Gwynn.
I think, I was just concerned that Counsel Bottomley told us what the concerns were at Ways and Means, but not the resolutions to those concerns. So it was helpful. Director Gilman and Counsel Wheeler's explanations helped me greatly to understand, and I'm good, thank you.
Okay, does anyone else have any questions? For Liz Gilman while she's here? Okay, at this time, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote.
So just as a point of clarification, this is the motion that Counselor Jarvis and Counselor Forgie are recusing themselves from, so I will not call their names during the roll call vote.
Right, someone's going to?
Counselor Gwynn? Whoop, whoop. Sorry.
Whoever is LD is making the noise. LD needs to mute.
LD, oh, I'm not even looking at the list.
Is that better?
Okay. All right.
Are we ready for the roll call?
We are, thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Counselor Gwynn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Vice President Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Absolutely.
Counselor Herschel?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
President Ricketts, does the President wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
The motion passes.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, and? The next one, who would like to read this? Okay. The City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Wiedergardner, an order to appropriate from free cash in the amount of $500,000 to the general stabilization. Ordered that the Greenfield City Council appropriate the sum of $500,000 from free cash to the general stabilization fund. Majority vote required. Wait, the second?
Second, Elmer.
Thank you. Ways and Means, what was the decision?
Counselor Forgie, you are on mute.
Okay, try again. It was a unanimous positive recommendation that comes out of committee to the council. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Seeing none, may we have a roll call?
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Vice President Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Herschel?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgie?
Yes.
Does the President wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay. For the next order, please. I'll read it, I'll take it. It's order number fiscal year 21-061. The City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Wiedergardner, an order to appropriate from free cash in the amount of $300,000 to contract stabilization. Ordered that the Greenfield City Council appropriate the sum of $300,000 from free cash to the contract stabilization fund. Majority vote required. And I hope I just read the right one.
Point of order, we didn't.
No, we did not.
We did not.
You're going to, you were going to read the one that's 21-062, I believe, correct? Am I wrong?
It's on page 25, it's fiscal year 21-060. Thank you.
All right. Fiscal year 21-060. The City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Wiedergardner, an order to appropriate from free cash in the amount of $600,000 to capital stabilization. Ordered that the Greenfield City Council appropriate the sum of $600,000 from free cash to the capital stabilization fund. Majority vote required. Second, Disorder. Madam President, I am reporting that this was a unanimous positive recommendation coming out to council. Thank you. Does anyone from the floor have any questions or comments? Seeing none, or am I? And she'll, yeah, okay.
We've indicated in the chat.
Okay. I'm sorry?
No one has indicated they would like to speak in the chat.
No, I saw Dan, but I knew that was from the last time. Thank you. Could I have a roll call, please?
Point of order? Counselor Mayo has asked to speak.
Oh, sorry, I didn't see that. Go ahead, Counselor Mayo.
Counselor Mayo, are you on mute?
I am, now I'm off. Okay. I just wanted to thank everyone for acknowledging me. I did just have, do we have the right to basically ask what the $600,000 is being used for specifically?
Okay, Liz, Liz Gilman.
Yes, thank you. It's going to be put in this fund. For each project that gets approved, council will vote on that. So any money coming out of the fund, City Council will vote on.
So it's not one particular, it's not one particular thing? It's, it could be a bunch of things?
Correct.
Okay.
You have the opportunity to vote on those things.
Understood.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gilman. Thank you, Counselor Mayo. Counselor Disorder, you have the floor.
I'm all set, thank you.
You are all set? Okay, thank you. Counselor Gilmar? Oh, you just tell him you'll be right back? Okay.
President Ricketts, I will read one if you want.
Okay, when it's time, I have to vote on this one first. I was going to wait for Counselor Gilmore. I don't know if "be right back" is really right back.
President Ricketts?
Yes.
The motion only needs seven to pass.
So, yeah, let's, yes, could you go ahead with the roll? Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Counselor, Vice President Gilmore? I don't believe she's back yet.
Okay.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Herschel?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgie?
Yes.
I still don't see that Vice President Gilmore is back. Would the President like to vote?
Yes and yes. She just came?
Motion passes.
I would like to vote yes, that's not too late.
The motion has not been declared, a yes is recorded. The motion is unanimous.
Thank you, thank you so much. So for the next appropriation, that's on page 27. Counselor Elmer? If Counsel Forgie does not mind. Oh, no, go right ahead, that's fine.
Okay, we didn't skip page 26?
Yes, it is on page 26. Order number 061.
Okay. Order number FY21061. Upon recommendation of Mayor Wiedergardner, an order to appropriate free cash in the amount of $300,000 to contract stabilization. Ordered that, colon, the Greenfield City Council appropriate the sum of $300,000 from free cash to the contract stabilization fund. Majority vote required.
Second? Mayo?
Thank you. Forgie? Yep, Madam President. Again, this comes out of committee with a positive unanimous recommendation to council. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Counselor Disorder? I just wanted to say that we had a sun discussion on this, and that from the mayor's office and Director Gilman, they're planning on setting up a type of a plan so that there won't be any question about who gets what for when someone settles their contract. They're looking forward and making a plan for that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? May I have a roll call?
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Vice President Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Herschel?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgie? Does the President wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. The next appropriation, please. Ways and Means?
I could take it.
Who's, who can read it? I'm sorry.
This is Mayo.
Okay, yes, go ahead.
Okay. Order number FY21-062. City Council order, City of Greenfield, Massachusetts, City Council, upon recommendation of Mayor Wiedergardner, an order to appropriate from free cash in the amount of $25,000 to compensated absences. Ordered that the Greenfield Council appropriate the sum of $25,000 from free cash to the compensated absences fund.
Majority vote required.
Majority required.
Go down to the next paragraph, please.
Okay. City Council approved the establishment of a compensated absence fund for to provide for the payment of compensated absences upon termination. FY2016 was the last year an appropriation was made to the fund. The current balance is $46,901.62.
Second, Forgie.
Thank you. Could I have a report from Ways and Means?
Yes, again, once again, this is coming out with a positive unanimous recommendation to City Council. This was very favorably discussed, and there are a lot of excellent reasons why this is important. Those of us that have served with the town, particularly in, you know, departments where funds are very tight, oftentimes when a person retires or leaves the position, and there is time that has been accrued and left unpaid, but earned, that employee is entitled to purchase that time back. They can't purchase all of it. Sometimes it's a percentage of it, depending on what type of time it is. And in the past, departments were asked to just take it bottom line within their budget, which is very difficult to do, especially if you have a sum that's high enough that you might have to have a double or a triple-year agreement to pay off the earned time. So we saw this as an addition, which would bring up the balance to $70,000 plus, and it's a good start in trying to remove that budget buster piece from individual departments. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any questions or comments from council? Seeing none.
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Counselor Vice President Gilmore?
Yes.
Vice President Gilmore, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Herschel?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgie?
Yes.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Now we're gonna move on to amendment to chapter 200 zoning. Counselor Disorga?
Uh, order number 21-052. To the city council, move that it be ordered that the city council of Greenfield amend the zoning ordinance, chapter 200, section 200-4.2. Rural residential, RC subsection C, uses by special permit by striking paragraphs 19 and 20 in their entirety and replace with new paragraph 19 as follows. 19, marijuana cultivator to sec, 200-207.17, provided that any structure erected in such use in the RC zoning district must also be usable either for agricultural use such as hoop houses, greenhouses, and barns. And further amend the table of contents, contents, and index of the code. And further that non-substantive changes to the numbering of the ordinance be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the code of city of Greenfield. Two-thirds vote required.
Was second Forgie? Oh, thank you. Okay. Is there a report from EDC?
Yeah. A report from committee. On February 9th, a joint public hearing of the planning board and the EDC was held relative to the farm, relative to the farming of the RC zone. All members of the public board of the ordinance spoke in favor of change. In this way, this fits the nature of rural residential develop, development. Um, both committees voted unanimously to appro, approve the zoning change that is amended on page 43 of your packet. Um, and this will give equal access to all marijuana cultivators. There was no tier limit in other zones and retail as an accessory use is permitted in the GI district and elsewhere. So. May I then read the motion on page 43?
Um, let me see. Is, um.
That's procedural for Clerk Scott. Um.
I'd be happy to pitch in, Counselor Disorga.
Okay. Okay. Hold on one second. Clerk Scott, does that, that has to be read now? Yes? Or did she go?
She, if Counselor Disorder would like to make a motion to amend the main order to the language on page 43, she should read it into the record.
Okay. Um, so you'll read that into the re, into the record and then I'll call on Counselor Wheeler and then Dolan. Okay. Go ahead, Counselor Disorga.
I move, I move that the city council amend the zoning ordinance, chapter 200, section 400.2, rural residential district RC subsection C, uses by special permit by striking paragraphs 19 and 20 in their entirety and replace with new paragraph 19 as follows. 19. Marijuana cultivator pursuant to 200-7.17, provided that any structure erected for such uses in the RC zoning district must also be usable for either agricultural use such as hoop houses, greenhouses, and barns, or for residential use. And further amend section 400.2C, rural residential, RC, of the zoning ordinance by adding a new number 20 under subsection C. Uses allowed by special permit, so that reads as follows. Marijuana 20, marijuana product manufacturing and marijuana retailer as accessory uses to the use marijuana cultivator. 200-7.17. Amend appendix A, table of uses of the zoning ordinance by adding the following new categories. As listed below. Is, is there a?
Second, Wheeler.
Okay. Thank you. Um, so Counselor Wheeler, Dolan, and Gwynn, um, would you like to speak to the amendment or? We'll start with Counselor Wheeler.
Um.
Or do you want me to come?
Yeah, I can, I'll try to speak to the amendment, sure. Um.
No, no.
I'm in favor, I'm in favor of this amendment, which, uh, as Counselor, uh, Disorga indicated, comes, uh, from the planning board, um, who recommended it positively. Um, I do have, um, one concern, which is not with the amendment, but it's something that came up when I was thinking about it, which is that, um, the, that marijuana retail use is not allowed in the GI, either as an accessory use or as a, as a standalone use. Um, so to my mind, that creates a, uh, competitive disadvantage for dispensaries in the GI. It means that they can't be vertically integrated in the way that a dispensary in the RC could be after that change. Now, I'm not, I don't think that's an argument against this amendment. I think that's an, that's an argument for changing the use table and allowing vertical integration in the GI. Um, and we can't make that amendment tonight. Um, it would have to go through planning board public hearing. Um, but I, I do hope that we could come back to that, um, at some point. But, uh, otherwise, I do support this amendment.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Wheeler. I'm, now Counselor Dolan, I know you wanna speak to the full amendment, so let me just go to Counselor Gwynn to see if he wants to speak to the amendment and then I'll circle back.
Um, I don't know if I wanted to speak to the main motion or the amendment. Um, but my, I think our point was read when Counselor Disorga read the second part, because in our agenda, it talked about the part that says "or residential", which, which was not in the main motion. So I think we're clear. I'm all set now.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Um, Counselor Gilmore? And then Counselor Disorga? Okay. Go ahead, Counselor Gilmore.
Yeah, I have a quick clarifying question. I might have comments later, but Counselor Wheeler, can you tell me, what it, what do you mean by vertical integration?
Meaning that a marijuana cultivator could also either manufacture and/or sell their product to some degree on site. So this, um, accessory use would allow for some type of onsite retail, um, which is the, that's what I mean by, uh, vertical integration.
Thank you. Perfect.
Okay. Perfect. Um, Counselor Disorga?
Um, I just wanted to speak to Counselor Wheeler's concerns. Um, I brought your concerns up to Director Turog the next day after we had our, after we had our hearing, our deliberations. And, um, the use table had, had just been, I was correct in my hunch that night. The use table had been corrected in the GI district. Um, and retail is now listed as an accessory use in the GI district, so they do not have, and, um, so that one district does not have, the GI, that, that is allowable now in the GI. And that happened recently. It, I think it was the last set of changes that were made, probably in November or December. But I did directly ask him that question and they can, they would now be permitted to do.
Okay, thank you. I was confused because their appendix, which they included in their recommendation, doesn't list it.
No. Uh, may I, may I speak? Um. And I had the same question. And, and direct, and Director Turog stated that because the retail is listed as an accessory use, it would indeed be allowed. That was the answer.
Okay. Phew. So, at this point, um, before we vote on that amendment, Counselor Dolan, do you still want to just wait until we get to the whole full amendment? Or do you wanna make a comment now?
Yeah, I'd prefer to wait until we're back on the main motion.
Okay. I just don't wanna, um, mess up anyone. So. At this point, um, could we have a roll call on the amendment?
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Vice President Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Herschel?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgie?
Yes.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes. And yes.
The main motion has now been amended.
Thank you. So let's go back to the full amendment. With the amendment, I mean, the full, um, you know what I want. So.
Main motion as amended.
Motion as amended, thank you. And I'll let Counselor Dolan start off here.
Thank you. Um, so I wanna preface this by saying, oh, first of all, I'm, I'm gonna take up the next two zoning issues kind of as a, as a group because I see them together.
Okay.
And I wanna preface it by saying, I plan to vote yes on both of them, um, because I think they are really important for particular businesses that we wanna attract. I do wanna voice some concerns about how the process has gone with those, though. Um, I think it's pretty clear that both of these represent carve-outs for particular businesses that we would like to see in Greenfield. Um, and I think anybody who claims to the, claims the contrary is, is being disingenuous. Um, you know, these are reactive responses to requests from business owners. And that's just not particularly the way that I would like us to go about zoning. I think zoning is, is supposed to be proactive. It's supposed to decide the parameters of what we wanna see in a particular area and then allow that sort of development. And particularly what we're doing now is problematic because we're setting a precedent that business owners who wanna start this kind of business, which is incredibly lucrative for the town, first have to negotiate a zoning change through the council with a super majority. Then they have to create a host community agreement and negotiate that. And then they have to get a special permit for their project, because those are required on all marijuana businesses. And I'm as pro-regulation as any politician out there, but those seem like a really onerous set of, of rigmarole to put business, potential businesses through as they're trying to, to regulate, to locate in Greenfield. And so I think, I would just like to say, in the future, these are very important right now. In the future, I hope we can take more of a proactive approach to this and decide what we wanna see, create the regulations that would allow it, and then let those businesses, you know, locate here. I, I'm concerned here because we have no idea how many businesses didn't approach us because of our zoning laws. We're, I think, very fortunate that two did, but we don't, we'll never be able to measure the lost opportunities that came from having a zoning code that basically forbids this sort of cultivation in the RC districts. So I'll be voting for them, but, um, I hope we can, we can take a different approach with this sort of thing next time.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Counselor Dolan. So I'm gonna go to Counselor Disorga, then Counselor Wheeler, and then Counselor Gilmore. So Counselor Disorga, could you please begin?
Um. I, I, I hear what Counselor Dolan said, and I remember when we initially wrote the zoning regulations, I was distressed that we put such regulations on cultivation in the area where one might cultivate. So I hear where you're coming from. That's all.
Thank you. Counselor Wheeler?
Thanks. Um, yeah, speaking to one of the last things that Counselor Dolan said, um, just in terms of measuring what we have lost, I do know that we, that, uh, downtown, nearly downtown, but, um, uh, commercial landlord who's actually zoned GI did lose a tenant early on in the process because marijuana, um, to, well, I forget. It hadn't been, it hadn't, either manufacturing or retail wasn't allowed in the GI at that time. And I think it's been changed since then, it sounds like. But, um, that just speaks to the need to, to get ahead of this, because I don't know if that property owner spoke to the city about the fact that they lost a lucrative tenant. Um, you know, a lot of people see the zoning and they don't just assume that they can change it. Um, so I think it's just, uh, another, another reason, uh, to try to get the, um, the group that Counselor Dolan mentioned earlier formed. Um, but I do, um, I do support this. I think it's great that this, uh, it sounds like will lead to outdoor cultivation, which is really absolutely what should be happening. I'd love to see more of it. I'd love the, um, you know, that it, that if businesses like this work out, that the city will consider whether uh, it needs to be capped at eight or not, whether, um, you know, because we, we can support a lot of economic development, I think. But the, the one thing I did wanna point out is just, so every, so we know what we're voting on. This does eliminate a, um, the craft marijuana cooperative, um, prioritization, which is what this had, the way this was originally writ, wrote. It prioritized craft marijuana cooperatives, which are LLCs that have to be composed of Massachusetts residents. So just so we know, um, that that would do away with that. It does, we still allow craft marijuana cooperatives. Um, I'm, I'm assuming that they weren't not, you know, knocking down our doors and so therefore I'm fine with, um, with this, you know? Um, so all in all, I support it.
Thank you, Counselor Wheeler. So I'm gonna go to Counselor Gilmore and then Counselor Gwynn. Go ahead, Counselor Gilmore.
Yeah, I kind of wanna make two points. I think that, so first and foremost, um, I feel like since we have legalized medicinal and recreational marijuana in our state, I think that by putting onerous, uh, rules and regulations through zoning and through different things, we're still treating it like, like it's a drug, like it's heroin, like, you know, like it's, you know, like it's illegal. And I think that we need to step back from that because this is legal. It's a plant. It's not nuclear a way. It's not nuclear waste. And we should grow it in the healthiest way possible, which means outdoors, right? You try and grow tomatoes in your dining room under grow lights, they are not going to do as well. They're not going to be as healthy. But secondly, one of the points that Counselor Dolan and Counselor Wheeler brought up is, you know, people seeing regulations and feeling like they can't ask for exceptions. And I see this at work all the time with students who, I have students who will ask for exceptions to rules that I feel are set in stone. And I am like the first arbiter of their requests. And to see what some people will ask for versus what other people will ask for, I think you're setting up this unfair precedent if we sort of create this artificial barrier where, you know, some people aren't going to ask for an exception. So we should just say, this is how it should be and everybody has equal access. Because some people feel entitled to ask and some people don't.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Gwynn, and then Counselor Mayo has left the meeting for a moment. So go ahead, Counselor Gwynn.
I just want to say that I'm in favor of both motions at this point that are coming up unless there's some changes that are brought forward. But I think we have to listen to what Counselor Dolan said earlier. Zoning is really supposed to be proactive, not reactive. And we're walking a fine line when we start to do this. So I don't want to start a new precedent where that is coming. People are coming to us because we've never allowed that. So I'm not saying I disagree with this. I think it's good, I think, but I just think we have to watch how we're doing things because this is not the way that we normally want to tackle projects as they come. We want projects going to spots that we've allocated, not trying to allocate spots. So that's where we need to look at. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gwynn. Is there any more questions or comments? How much of a vote do we need? Two-thirds? Okay. So could we have a roll call on the full motion with the amendment?
Yes. Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Vice President Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo is not back yet. Counselor Herschel?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgie? Counselor Forgie, you're on mute?
Yes.
I don't see that Counselor Mayo is back yet. Would the President like to vote?
Yes and yes.
The motion passes.
All right, thank you. And let's continue on. He'll come back. When he comes back, if your household is quiet, please feel free to unmute so we can move through this. So Counselor Disorder, would you like to do the next?
Sure. Order number 21063. That the city council moved that it be ordered that the city council of Greenfield amended the zoning map to extend the existing general commercial GC zoning district along Berniston Road in the northeast section of Greenfield from rural residential RC to the GC, to GC, to the Berniston Town Line by extending 500 feet from the road center line of the west side of Berniston Road, 500 feet from the road center line of the east side of Berniston Road to I-91, and changing the entirety of parcels R-10-5, R-10-8, R-10-8A, R-10-9, and R-10-13 north of I-91 and east of Berniston Road from RC GC. And further amend the table of contents and index of the code and further that non-substantive changes to the numbering of the ordinance be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the city of Greenfield. Two-thirds vote required.
I have a second.
Second, Elmer.
Thank you. The report from EDC.
A joint public hearing was held by Economic Development and Planning Board. And both Planning Board and Economic Development voted unanimously to approve this. The rationale was that there was, there's a commercial district on Berniston Road that includes the lumber store to storage, the bath fitter, the bathroom, et cetera. And this change encompasses those five parcels, one of which is an auto repair, another is Pacifico North America where a large-scale solar is, one is indoor action where this entity that wants to start a business is going to probably come. And this property is seeking a commercial use for indoor, yeah, this is correct. The board felt the best move was to simply extend the GC District, thus allowing a commercial use. And both committees voted positively.
Okay, thank you. For the record, I want to say that Counselor Mayo is back. Let's see, does anyone have any questions or comments on this? Counselor Wheeler?
Thank you, Madam President. I did vote in support of this at EDC and I will be voting in support of this tonight. But Counselor Elmer did a good job of, I think, summarizing my response at EDC, which was that this change offends my sensibilities. To my mind, it is a, in theory, a terrible change, but in practice, a good one. The Planning Board did a very good job of pointing out that there are, there's little room for negative consequences. They were careful in the way that they made this proposal. My concerns, you know, are that I think it, in theory, again, it can encourage sprawl to extend the GC all the way to our northern border. As someone who's spent a lot of time trying to help the city clean up the southern entrance to the city, I know how difficult it can be once a lot of commercial businesses go in there. But like I said, the Planning Board seems confident that that won't be the case, that there's farmland on wetlands. And I have been assured they won't turn into a dollar store and a bunch of gas stations. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna, you know, hold my nose and vote in favor of this because I do think it's a good move overall.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Gilmore?
I would really like for Counselor Wheeler to expand on some of his concerns here because I also, I feel like I tell this fine line between, you know, mixed use and sprawl. And sometimes it's hard to tell the difference between what's going to be a really good development and what's going to turn into, you know, something we don't really want to see. So if you could expand, I'd appreciate it.
With your permission, Madam President?
Please.
Thanks. You know, I find that that general commercial area out there is a little bit unorthodox. And so I, it's not the first thing that I would choose to expand just considering that Greenfield already has a lot of commercial areas. We've had consulting studies done that have said that the Main Street commercial area actually needs to be reduced and more of it needs to be replaced with residences. But no one from the public, no one from that side of town came to say anything negative to this proposal. So I take it that they feel that that commercial area integrates well into that side of town. The Planning Board explained that the area on the west side of Berniston Road is essentially a wetland and really not good for any development. So it would be almost assured that it would stay as agriculture. A couple of spots are already being used as commercial, you know, maybe it was there before the zoning, I'm not sure. I don't know the history. So there's really actually functionally not much, not much change here. There's maybe, maybe one or two houses. I can't remember if there's any residences. Counselor Disorder would have a better sense. So that's why I don't think it would actually encourage sprawl. It's just, it was my first reaction on seeing it.
Okay. Thank you, thank you. Counselor Wheeler, I watched the Planning Board in EDC. You hung in there. You got your point across. And no, I felt like it was a really good discussion. I felt like it was a great banter with, you know, the EDC. And no, I think I'm happy where everybody landed and stuff. But it's good because it's clear that we're just not a rubber stamp and we don't care. I like all the thought that went into this. So thank you, thank you for the discussions. Okay, does anybody else have any questions or comments? And I think maybe Counselor Disorder.
Yes. I wanted to just say about, about to go back to what Counselor Gilmore said, I don't think this is sprawl. Having looked at those parcels and walked through them, I think we're talking five parcels, two of which are owned by one entity. The last two are owned by one entity where they are putting in the large-scale solar. The next entity is, it's an auto, listed as auto repair, which is a commercial use. So that would have been grandfathered in. And what we have there right now is an abandoned vehicle. The next parcel being this one where indoor action was. So I actually could see the expansion of that. I thought it was, I think it's going to be a good move because we've had things that wanted to come in before. And we're talking about 500, basically 500 feet. And all of the other ones that I listed before are, you know, they are all commercial. So I actually thought that fit. That was just the flip side of it. But I hear what Counselor Wheeler said.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Jarvis, you have the floor.
Thank you. I'd just like to reassure the city councilors. I've walked up those many parcels out there in many adventures out there in that part, seeing that they live up here. And it is extremely wet. And also keep in mind, there's Royal Foods, there's the cap place, there's bath fitters, there's next to the auto place is the trailer place. So there's plenty of businesses out there to begin with. And I do see people's concerns. But if they're familiar with the land up there, there is no way anybody's going to be building anything more. If you look to the left before 91's bridges, it's all wet there. You can see it from 91 as you're passing going north and to the westerly boundaries of that. It's sopping wet out there. Even when we're in a drought, it will be wet out there. So just so people rest assured that I don't believe there'll be any big developments happening out there. I know I spoke on this when we were looking at this before committees got jostled around. And I was in favor from then, and I'll be in favor at this time, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks so much. Thanks for some history there. Counselor Dolan, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you. Just another brief comment. I think this last discussion is kind of exactly sums up some of the problems that I have with this one. It's pretty clear that we wanted to change just that one parcel, the one that was affected by the particular business that we're trying to attract. But we can't do that because there are laws against spot zoning and there are laws against spot zoning for a reason. So we kind of found four parcels that were close by that we were clear we're not going to be developed and we rolled them into this package. I just want to call out what's happening here and the fact that I'm uncomfortable with it.
I didn't hear the very end of that. I'm so sorry.
Oh, just, I want to call out that that's what's happening here and that I'm uncomfortable with it.
Uncomfortable, okay. Okay, thank you. Counselor Elmer, please speak.
Thank you. In terms of spot zoning, the planning director pointed out that the western extension of this zoning change, which you'll see in the map two pages further, is so that it wouldn't be spot zoning, so that it would continue the dimensions of the previous, of the other commercial zone in a logical way. I'm not sure if it will persuade anybody here, but that was his intention. Also, I rode my bike out there to check it out. And if there were a better place to hide a marijuana vertically structured marijuana processing facility in Greenfield, I don't know. It's really tucked away and very, it'll be very discreet. And I think it will actually improve property values around there. Thank you.
Thank you. So councilors that weren't able to attend EDC or Planning Board, you just got an overview of what those meetings were like. It was a really good, rich discussion. So any more questions or comments? At this time, I'd like to ask for a roll call vote.
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Vice President Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Herschel?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgie?
Yes.
Does the President wish to vote?
Yes and yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And so for this next piece, it really belongs to EDC, but Ways and Means helped out and took it on their agenda. So I don't know who wants to present tonight.
If it's okay with EDC, I'll present. So I'll read the motion.
Please, thank you.
Thank you. Order number fiscal year 21-084. The city council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council votes to authorize the mayor to execute a certain straw conveyance agreement, within quotes, by and between the city of Greenfield, 401 Liberty Street LLC, East Hampton Savings Bank, and Commons Wealth LLC, and execute other documentation as may be required for the purpose of clearing certain defects in the chain of the title to the property formerly known as the Land Silver to the property formerly known as the Lunt Silversmith's property in the city block bounded by Federal, Kenwood, Davis, and that should be Norwood Street, just want to say that that's a typo. Okay, streets in the city of Greenfield, quote, "the land", unquote. The land was made subject to condominium statute, Mass. General Law, Chapter 183A, and was known as 298 Federal Street Condominium. The straw conveyance agreement proposes to clear the title defects by first removing the land from MGL Chapter 183A, executing and delivering a confirmatory deed to the city of Greenfield for the, quote, "ballfields", end, end quote, as shown on parcel two in Franklin County Registry of Deeds Plan Book 136, page 89, conveying the remaining property to Comm, Commons, I'm sorry, Commons Wealth LLC, acting as a straw for the purpose of resubmitting said land to Massachusetts Condominium Statute, MGL Chapter 183A, conveying the newly described condominium units to 104 Liberty Street LLC and the city of Greenfield, and then renewing the lease and option relationship between the city of Greenfield and 401 Liberty Street LLC as described in the lease and option agreement dated August 19, 2015, of which was given in a notice of lease dated August 19, 2015, and recorded in the Franklin County Registry of Deeds in book 6821, page 345. Majority vote required.
Do we have?
Second, Jarvis.
And I would like to make a friendly amendment to change Northwood to Norwood. This is a, looks like it's a pretty important document, and I would not like this to get all flipped on its head because we didn't fix that. Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
That'd be a friendly one.
The motion was read properly into the record by councillor Forgie, so there is no need for a friendly amendment.
Perfect, thank you. Okay. Councillor Forgie? The report from committee.
Well, it needs a second, first of all.
Oh, I thought.
Second is the order.
Okay, sorry, my bad.
No problem.
Okay. This was very, a lengthy discussion. We were fortunate to have MJ Adams and Eric Turag and our mayor involved in a discussion concerning this. I will report out the vote, but I would appreciate it, and I think it would be very useful to all the councillors if MJ, who I know is here this evening, wanted to give us the overview in English. So, having said that, we actually reported out of committee with three positives, one negative, and one abstention.
Okay.
In favor. Is MJ there?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Madam President, is it okay if MJ addresses council?
Please, welcome, yes.
I'm glad to be here, and thank you for reading through that long, that long document, or that long request for a vote. The purpose of this request this evening is for city council to authorize the mayor to execute some legal documents for the purposes of cleaning up the title that, that exists for the properties that we own on Federal Street, the former Lunt Silversmith site, which we took by tax taking in, in a a complex process in the mid 2014 to 2016. The goal of these documents will be essentially to transfer all ownership to the Commonwealth LLC, where they can, where that legal entity will hold it for a moment while they dissolve the existing underlying condominium, the condominium master deed, and recreate a new commercial condominium deed that reflects all the changes that have happened and clarifies some things that are, are, are not clear at the moment. The, the first thing that will happen is that the the parcel that is the ball field will be no longer part of the condominium, the commercial condominium that exists, when the site was developed into the, when it was condominiumized in 2001, the ball fields were part of that condominium that was created. And to the, in 2014 or 2015, when there were the, the transitions with, with ownership, the parcel, the ball fields parcel was transferred to the city, but it was not released from the condominium, so it is in essence still part of the commercial condominium that exists. Subsequently, the 401 Liberty, 401 Liberty Street, who became the developer of the full site, retained or took ownership of condominium A, which is the showcase building, people call it the lollipop or the restaurant, but that unit A building has never been in the city's ownership, but unit B and C, which is the center part of the mill buildings, and then unit C, which was the Maori building, all are in the ownership of the city at the moment. We currently leased that to 401 Liberty Street, they have been, and they have been responsible for the cleanup activity, and they actually lease out the properties to, to tenants, the Behavioral Health Network runs some programs at the site, as does clinical support options. So the goal here is really, and I will also say that one part of cleaning up this deed will be to clarify the title such that 401 Liberty Street can enter into a lease with Verizon to put antennas on the smokestack that exists on the property. The smokestack looks like it's attached and part of unit B, which we own, but the document, the condominium documents are cloudy enough for Verizon, the Verizon attorneys to have some concern about that. That said, I'll also say that we have leased unit B in its entirety, along with unit C, to 401 Liberty Street LLC. So the purpose here is to do a couple of things. Number one, first and foremost in my mind, is to get the title cleared up, because our intentions are to transfer the title to 401 Liberty Street at, at some point soon, and in order to do that, we need to have a clear title. Number two is to make sure that we cleanly and clearly and definitively own the ball field sites. And then number three is just to create a new commercial condominium that is, is fresh and reflects the existing layout that is now in place with the new buildings that have been placed and reconfigured. So I'm happy to entertain any questions. I, I, and I hesitate, I will use this word, but I hesitate to use it because I use it and I, and it, I don't mean to take this lightly, we called it a little bit of legal housekeeping, but it is in some ways just to clean up the title, put things in order, so that when we go to sell this property to 401 Liberty, we don't have to work through that process anymore, and in the meantime, clarify that the ball fields are entirely in the ownership of the city of Greenfield, and that the, the smokestack is, is clearly part of the new commercial condominium that's created.
Thank you, MJ.
I hope that was clear enough.
Are there any questions or comments from councillors? Councillor Disorga? And then councillor Gilmore?
The, the remediation of the property is 95% complete. I've been assured by the current administration that continued efforts will be made to remediate any problems that are ongoing. And although in essence this is a housekeeping amendment on a straw deed, which I understand, I will be voting no to ensure that my concerns, the remediations will continue to be heard.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Gilmore?
Yes, when we talked about this at committee chairs, I was happy to just put it straight on the city council agenda instead of sending it to a subcommittee, because it was characterized as a housekeeping, housekeeping issue, which to me just seems like, you know, you're, you're dotting your i's and you're crossing your t's. But I've been wondering since then, if we're talking about cleaning up a title, it, you know, like, this is, this is gonna sound strange, but if the pedal is not already clean, then what is it? And why is it in the state that it's in? Like, I, I'm wondering about the origins, why is this something that needs to be cleaned up now, why was it not cleaned up from the beginning? I mean, when I bought my house, which I know is very different, but when I bought my house, the person who owned it for me had to do all sorts of things to make sure that she was ready to sell the house to me. What, what's the history behind this that needs to be cleaned up? And I, and are there other properties where we're gonna have to worry about this in the future?
Let me answer that. The cleaning up of the title, first of all, you frequently do that for your financing, usually if you have financing on a property, that's what will trigger the necessity for the clarity of the title, making sure that the title is clean. The, there was, when the city acquired the property, there was no financing as part of that, we took it as part of a tax taking. So there wasn't any financing that was done for us to secure the, the property. The, the other things that have happened, I mean, you, you heard me explain the condominium, there had been some shifting of the units because of the use of the building, the building, the building A or unit, what became unit A and unit B were a conjoined building that had some areas of overlap or some common areas, so there was some transfers of ownership, probably 2017, 2018, just for clarity, as use, as they were starting to redevelop and the new uses were coming into, specifically into unit B. Then the other piece of that is the Maori building, unit C, was not cleanly part of the commercial condominium that was created in 2001. That went through land court, has since been designated to be part of that property, so it now sits in that commercial condominium area, even though it's not formally part of the commercial condominium. So those are the things we need to clean up. The other piece is, is that there was enough ambiguity on the status of the smokestack, which 401 Liberty wants to have a lease with Verizon on, that the Verizon attorneys told 401 Liberty that the title, title issues had to be cleaned up. And that was concurrently when we were talking with them about the, the initial steps the city needed to take to work with them to transfer them, to transfer the property to them under the terms of the lease with per, option to purchase agreement that the city executed in 2015 with them. Councillor Gilmore, does that answer your question sufficiently? There were, there were a number of things that were happening.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I mean, councillor Disorga just brought up this issue of remediation, and I'm, I just, I'm, I'm sorry if I'm belaboring the point, I just want to make sure that we're doing the right thing, because I don't, I don't want us or our taxpayers to, to get stuck with something. Could you talk a little more about the remediation?
I can, although I will share with you that the reason Eric was at the Ways and Means Committee last night with us was because he's, he's the one who's most knowledgeable about it and has been with the, the cleanup effort since the beginning. So the city, we knew that there was environmental contamination on the site. The city engaged a, what's called a licensed site professional, LSP, which is a professional environmental engineer to follow the Mass DEP process of evaluating the environmental contamination on the site and working to develop a cleanup plan. This one hand, this one went along with what was happening with the redevelopment and the, there was a demolition of a building and, and some reconstruction work that was happening. So the, the licensed site professional, the LSP, developed guidelines, the plans that needed to happen, and oversaw the process of doing the cleanup. Now, the part of doing the cleanup involved the installation of some equipment and monitoring of air and water, and that has been ongoing. And what, that's one of the things that councillor Disorga and I were talking about is how recently the, when was the most recent air quality testing on the, on the property? So we, I committed that we would look into that and make sure that we were up to date, and that the cleanup and the ongoing monitoring was going as it should be.
Okay. Thank you. Councillor Gilmore, do you have a follow-up or are you all set?
I just want to know who's paying for the cleanup, and then I can move on.
Sure. The deal with the, the, when we designated 401 Liberty Street as the developer of the site, the deal was that they would pay for the cost of the cleanup, and the latest documentation, documentation I have on that is they spent about $908,000 doing the cleanup, and then there'll be ongoing monitoring also.
Right, so I'll, councillor Jarvis, then councillor Forgie.
Thank you, Madam President. I would just like to say that, that the city has already vetted this out, out through, through our, our attorneys, and they've already looked at the document and the straw document to make sure that it, that it's kind of ironclad here. And we really have to keep in mind, when we're talking about commercial real estate, it's a lot different than selling our house. Commercial real estate can be very convoluted. That's why we have experts that we implore and we employ, and we ask for their, for their assistance in, in, in dealing with these properties. Maybe the answer is that maybe when we first got into this, maybe it wasn't done enough. But we, we're taking the steps now so we can, so we can kind of clean up the act here, get it all, all in, in order. So someday, instead of getting a lease, we can sell the property and we can get a much more value in property taxes. And we can get people, employ people, I mean, I, so this is things that we need to keep in mind, as far as the contamination, I would almost venture that the people, that the company that's in charge of the contamination is not gonna put a stamp on a piece of property that, that the DEP is gonna be overlooking and and, 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 and selling. It's not gonna go on the market until that, that site's clean. As a firefighter, I know we walked through that building many, many times, and it kind of like makes a hair on the back of my neck stand up on, on what we were walking into and walking through. But as part of the job, that's, we, we take that on as part of our responsibility. We most certainly don't want people being employed into a building that we know may be contaminated, but that's why we hire people to make sure that it's all cleaned up, as we did with the Bendix property. It's a long, drawn-out process, and, and I don't believe anybody's gonna be moving into the property, that, that part of the parcel of the property until it's cleaned up. For those reasons, I think the city's taken the right steps in this, and we have to kind of have confidence in the attorneys that we've paid to give us a decision and to draw up this document to kind of straighten it out, so further down the road, we won't be revisiting this. And maybe we'll learn our lesson, and the next time, we won't have to go down this road either. That's all I have to say, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Councillor Forgie?
Thank you, I'm gonna pass.
Okay. Yeah, and I want to say that I've been around for a long time in brownfields, I totally understand. So even when I heard it was 95% complete, I have to be like, oh my God, I mean, we all know what Lunt Silversmith was like there. We have some other places in town, I remember when we took down the GTD to put up that building too. It was huge, those were big projects, and the contamination and everything was it took, it took years, it was years before we could build to what now is some elderly housing and stuff, so I'm going to vote for this, but I totally understand what happens when we're talking about anything that's brownfield and the DEP, so I have my yes on this, and does anybody else have any questions or comments? So at this time, I'd like to have a roll So at this time, I'd like to have a roll call vote.
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn?
Yes.
Counselor DeSorga?
No.
Counselor Bottomley?
No.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Vice President Gilmore?
Come back to me in a minute, please.
Okay.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Herschel?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgie?
Yes.
Vice President Gilmore?
I'll vote no.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes, and yes.
The motion passed.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, MJ, for being here. And thank you Counselor DeSorga and Counselor Forgie for working on this together and sorting it out so that we could bring it forward in a quick way. Okay, so the next one, amend the code of the city of Greenfield, Counselor DeSorga, could you do that?
Oh, sure.
Okay.
Yes. The city council, oh, it's, it's, it's 2106. The city council, it had been ordered that the Greenfield City Council amends the code of the city of Greenfield by adding chapter 116 to establish the Commission on Disability Access ordinance as follows heretofore. A, there should be a commission on disability access consisting of five members and two alternate members appointed by the mayor with the approval of the city council for staggered three-year terms. B, said commission has duties and responsibilities as delineated in MGL section 8J. C, the ADA coordinator as appointed by the mayor shall be an ex officio member. And further amends the table and index of contents of the code and further that non-substantive changes to the numbering of the ordinance be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the code of the city of Greenfield. Majority vote required.
Second, Gwynn.
Thank you. And Counselor Gwynn, did this?
We had a discussion with Counselor DeSorga. And what did we decide at that meeting? Because now we've skipped a meeting and we sent it to council. Did we vote on that, or did we send it right ahead to Counselor DeSorga?
I believe that you voted on it.
It was a unanimous recommendation. I thought we did, but there was a couple of overlapping. So, yeah. Something that's been out there, Counselor DeSorga presented it, and we led to a recommendation.
Great, thank you so much. Do any counselors have any questions or comments?
I did. And then it looks like Chris Forgie is after me.
Okay, thank you.
So, okay, this is Counselor Gilmore. I just want to say that this is what I think of as a housekeeping issue. We've already had this commission on disability access. They do wonderful work. They need to do more work, obviously, because not our entire city is accessible to every single one of our neighbors. But having this ordinance in place is gonna be a good stepping stone to move forward and build on that work.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Gilmore. Counselor Forgie?
No, I'm all set. My question's been answered. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Counselor DeSorga, did you want to add anything to this before we vote?
Just, it was a necessary ordinance so that we'd always have a quorum, and the important work of the Commission on Disability Access assuring every member of the community has equal access to schools, municipal, commercial buildings, housing, and programs will be facilitated by the passage of this. I urge everybody to vote in the affirmative.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call?
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn?
Yes.
Counselor DeSorga? Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
President Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Herschel?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgie?
Yes.
Does the president wish to vote?
Yes, and yes.
The motion passed.
Okay. Do people need two minutes, or do you want to keep going? We're almost there. Okay, so the next one is the Community Preservation Committee. So Counselor Wheeler, do you want to read that, or do you want Counselor Gwynn to read it and you discuss it? I mean-
I'm happy to read it unless Counselor Gwynn really wants to.
It's all you, Counselor Wheeler.
I move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council amends the code of the city of Greenfield by adding chapter 117, ordinance to establish a community preservation committee as attached heretofore as exhibit A, and further amends the table and index of contents of the code and further that non-substantive changes to the numbering of the ordinance be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the code of the city of Greenfield.
Second, Second Service Mayo.
Okay. Okay, and so did we have a did we have a report?
This was brought up at committee. Counselor Wheeler presented once or twice, I think, on this, I'm not sure. And there was talk of some changes. I had asked to get a report from the mayor's office coming back to us about this, and I don't think Counselor Wheeler, we ever received that with their recommendations. Are you aware of anything, Counsel Wheeler?
I don't believe they had any recommendations.
You're right. I was just checking with the mayor's office to make sure that they were in agreement. And Counselor Wheeler probably can, if anyone has any questions, would be the best one to sum up that most of this was chapter law from the state and existing committees of the same and made to fit what we needed in Greenfield's ordinance. So if anyone would like Counselor Wheeler to recap for the third time.
Okay, anyone? Questions, comments?
Thank you. Yeah, I am happy to answer any questions, but I'm not gonna lead with them because I think I kind of explained it already. So what I'm gonna do is motion to amend the proposal to add the text in section 2, subclause 6, after the words, "Two members of the general public," insert "not city employees or currently holding elected or appointed positions." And further, section 2 clause 8, I believe, I hope I have that, no, it would be 7, wouldn't it? In the same manner, after the words, "Two members of the general public," insert the words, comma, "not city employees or currently holding elected or appointed positions," comma.
Second, Jarvis.
Second, more.
Okay, so amendment's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Counselor Gilmore?
Actually, I think that Counselor Gwynn got in just ahead of me.
Go ahead, Counselor Gilmore, I'm good. Go ahead.
Oh, I think I looked down.
All right, so I believe that all of us received an email from one of our constituents talking about how there are people in town who are on several board positions. And I think that that illustrates some of the frustration that I've been hearing from a lot of constituents. I feel like I've been banging my head against this wall for a long time. You've all heard me, I'm a broken record, but I have people that get in touch with me who feel like their voices aren't represented in the town, because there are like 20 people who are on all these different boards and there's this it's different configurations of the same people making decisions in town. And when that happens, we don't have a diversity of opinions, and we don't have a diversity of lifestyles. There are people who have different experiences. Those of us who are free to like give up, you know, I don't know, 12 hours a night once a month to sit on city council meetings, right? And I think by limiting this committee, if nothing else, if by limiting this committee to people who are not serving on any other board, it at least shows the community that we're trying to open up to more people. I know that I've heard the argument that we have a certain number of people who volunteer, and of course, it's always the same people. And I think that that happens. I see it, you know, in my union where I'm trying to recruit people to volunteer. I do see the same people over and over again. But I also have people who have reached out to me and told me that they volunteer and they are repeatedly told no, despite demonstrable qualifications for the position. And I don't want to call people out by name, but I've had people of color come to me saying that they've wanted to serve on boards when we've asked about why we have no people of color. I'm always told, people of color don't volunteer. So, you know, obviously, I don't want to call those people out by name and make them a target, right? If we can codify this, sorry, codify this into the ordinance, that it has to be somebody different. I mean, we talked about this with GSAT. The last time I was the chair of A&amp;O, the last meeting that we had, we talked about this. There was a member of the GSAT committee who was being appointed to another committee. And even though GSAT is not supposed to have any kind of cross-pollination, we still decided that because this person was getting paid, it didn't count. I think this is really important. I think this would be an olive branch to our constituents who feel like they're not being represented.
Okay, thank you. Counselor DeSorga, I'm sorry, Counselor Gwynn.
Speak at the end as the chair of A&amp;O. Let the rest go and I'll come back at the end, please.
I'm so sorry, Counsel Gwynn.
Oh, that's okay.
Counselor DeSorga, are you there?
So, yes, I I think I believe that I recall actually reading through this CPA law that that it was encouraged in the law itself that people would just be serving just on this one, to avoid any to avoid many of the things that we talked about. But I just, I think it was in the middle of Chris, you have a, excuse me, Counsel Forgie, you've got a paper up, or somebody's got a paper up.
That's okay.
Okay. So so I would support that amendment. I think that that's what it said in the law.
Okay. Okay. Counselor Gwynn?
Counsel Wheeler, could you refresh this? That is not in the law, because it would be in your law. So could you just go over that?
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Counselor Gwynn. You're right, it's not in the, it's not in mass general law. It is in the recommendations sent out by the Community Preservation Coalition, which I believe Counselor's received, and that's probably what Counselor DeSorga saw. It was a recommendation that I saw and wasn't initially convinced by, so that's why it's not in the initial proposal. I then had further conversations with the the executive director of the Community Preservation Coalition, who spoke to me about the reasons that they suggest that towns have this provision. And a lot of it goes towards what Counselor Gilmore said. The Community Preservation Act is not meant to be an extension of city government. It's really meant to be more of a people's way of getting extra projects through. It's unusual in that the mayor does not approve the funds. It goes from the Community Preservation Committee to council. So it would make sense that people who are not otherwise involved in the government would have a role on the committee. So he convinced me, and then other people in the community convinced me as well. So that's why I'm making the amendment and you know, just to reiterate, it only applies to the four at-large members appointed by, two by the mayor and two by the city council president. So if it were, if this amendment were to pass, it would only apply to four members. So that's, that's it.
Okay.
All right. Can I-
Counselor Gwynn. For the win.
Thank you, President Ricketts. Let me go, I think Counselor Wheeler missed one point that I thought was one of his best points, and that was this committee is gonna be a very busy committee. And one of the fears is that someone that's like yourself, President Ricketts, that's on many things and such like that, to given a role, especially in the establishment of this in the beginning years, is gonna take a lot of dedication. And the fear was, a lot of our best people are on three or four other things, and could they give it the time? So that was one of the things that sold me more than anything else. Except I'm not sure I'm gonna vote in favor of the amendment, but that was the best-selling point, I thought. My other, my other fear on this was, for the same reason, is it's only four people, which makes a big difference. But I know there are a lot of committees, and I'm gonna be in a disagreement with Counselor Gilmore, but I don't, I don't, I'm not saying to her point, because I believe what she's telling me, is that we can't get people. You know, they always say if you want something done, you have to ask a busy person. Because if you ask somebody that has all the time in the world, they don't volunteer. So I want to make sure we're inclusive, but I also want to make sure we have people that want to step up to all these committees. So anytime we're excluding people that are involved, and maybe they're on a minor committee, they're on, you know, one of the, one of the advisory committees or such, and I don't know if that would exclude them. So I have my fears that we could be, and I wish the mayor's office was still on, because I would love to get that answer, because we talked about this in committee also. So I agree with all of you. I'm just not sure how this is gonna go. The amendment has me perplexed. Thank you.
Okay. Would anybody else like to speak? Okay, so as someone who's been working with the mayor, and I've been doing lots of emails and making phone calls, I see where this is going. I know how many declines I received, which was quite a few, because they know the amount of work that is gonna go into this. And I picked lots of people who do not sit on anything, and hence them declining. So I'm not gonna vote for this, but I'm gonna live with it no matter what, and I will figure out, the mayor and I will keep talking, and we'll figure out who we actually end up wanting to place and stuff. But, you know, please know that as much as, you know, there's this diversity lacking on everything, I think if, as- there's this diversity lacking on everything, I think if, as any counselors are really truly hearing this, they need to bring it forward to the mayor, or, you know, help the people with the process of putting together just a short bio or resume and sending it in, and, or educating them to all the different committees we do have. Because that's what happened when I asked one person, who I really think very highly of, and they said, no, I don't want to be on this, I didn't even vote for it, but if there's anything else I can do, and I was like, ah, perfect! And so, I promised that I would spend Sunday, you know, going through the website, town website, find out which committees need some more bodies, and that was the right answer, that's what I liked. A lot of the other people were just like, no, no, I don't want to do it. And these were all different folks. So, like I say, I'm going to live with it no matter what, because I have a job to do, but I'm not going to vote for this. Okay, anyone else before we take a vote? Okay, so this is the vote on the amendment. Oh.
Counselor Dolan and Forgie noted in the chat box that they would like to speak.
Oh, okay. Counselor Forgie and then Counselor Dolan.
Well, I defer to Tim, because he was, he was ahead of me.
Perfect, go ahead.
Thank you, I'll be brief.
You don't have to.
I would, I would like to say that I understand that recruitment for positions like this is hard. I've been through this, it feels like 100 times in my time on council, trying to convince people to join various boards. I think also, it is our job to engage the public in that way. It's also the mayor's office's job to engage the public in that way. And I see the same pattern that Counselor Gilmore identified, of the same few people being cycling through various committees. So, I'm very much in favor of this. I think any incentive we have to do that outreach is a good incentive, it keeps us working at what we're supposed to be doing here.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Counselor Forgie?
Thank you. I'm not in favor of the amendment. I think there is a lot to be gained from people that have been immersed in the community, have been immersed in not only volunteering, but working on different, in different capacities, volunteering their time. I don't think those people should be automatically excluded because they have a history of volunteering and stepping up to their, to the plate. I understand the issue of inclusion and putting more people in more, and getting them more involved. And so, I like the language of the CPA that offers that opportunity, but I think government officials should be left to their own devices to place people that they would like to have be representatives of the, both the mayoral side of government and the council side of government. So, I will not be voting in favor of the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, may I have a roll call vote?
Roll call on the amendment?
Okay.
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn?
No.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Vice President Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Herschel?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgie?
Go.
Would the President like to vote?
Yes, I would.
No.
The amendment passes.
Sorry, I stepped on you for a moment. Now, I'd like a roll call vote on the entire thing with the amendment.
President Ricketts, would you like to ask if there's any discussion on the motion as amended?
No. No, yes. Are there any questions or comments on the amendment, on the question as amended? Seeing none, may I have a roll call vote?
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan? Counselor, Vice President Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Herschel?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgie?
Yes.
Does the President wish to vote?
Yes, and yes.
The motion passes as amended.
Thank you. Okay, Counselor Gwynn, you're up.
Before, let me make sure I didn't mute myself, okay. Before I read this, I just want to say that I was out of town last week, and Vice President Gilmore ran appointments and ordinances. I appreciate you doing that for me, I will read these, but any of the committee results, I'll ask Vice President Gilmore to give that comment.
Yes, I'm happy.
Thank you. I move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council pursuant to Charter Section 2-10 affirms the following appointment and reappointment by the mayor. Tim Fisk, local cultural council, term to expire December 31st, 2023. Jacob Frank, Sustainable Greenfield Implementation Committee, term to expire December 31st, 2023, majority vote required.
I have a second?
Second. Second, Gilmore?
Thank you.
So, this was positive, unanimous, and personal plug for Jacob Frank, my first year on city council, he shadowed me when he was a high school student, he was my junior counselor. And I believe he's a senior in high school right now, so I expect big things out of him.
Hey, any other comments or questions?
What if he's interested in CPA?
Yeah.
I hope he is.
No, that'd be great, no, that's not perfect.
I'm happy to talk to him.
Okay. Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Counselor, Vice President Gilmore?
Absolutely, yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Herschel?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgie?
Yes.
Does the President wish to vote?
Yes, and yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you. Counselor Gwynn?
Yeah, my, yes. Are we on 21083, is that right? I move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council pursuant to Charter Section 2-10 affirms the following appointment by the mayor to the planning board. Nathaniel Huzzy, term to expire December 31st, 2022, majority vote.
This one also was, I'm sorry, second by Gilmore, and I will tell you that this one was also a unanimous positive vote by A&amp;O.
Okay, does anybody have any questions or comments?
Just make one thing, there was an asterisk, if we saw on there, that this is a, filling the term, it's not a complete term, it's to complete the remaining term of James Allen, who retired.
Okay, well, thank you. I know Nate, and we are lucky to have him on planning board or any board, so I'm very excited, and I'm like behind this man 200%, so this is good. Any questions, comments? Would like to have a roll call vote?
Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Vice President Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Herschel?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgie?
Yes.
Does the President wish to vote?
Yes, and yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Counselor Gwynn?
I move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council pursuant to Charter Section 2-10 affirms the following appointment by the mayor to the Commission on Disability Access as an Alternative. Celeste Lunt for a three-year term to expire June 30th, 2024.
Second, Disorder. Thank you.
So, this one was also a unanimous positive, coming from A&amp;O.
Thank you. I love Celeste, this is another, like, this is wonderful. Any questions, comments? I'd like a roll call vote. Did I do something wrong?
I was on mute, sorry, guys.
Kathy, I thought.
I was like, come on, guys, we're having a good night, what did I do wrong?
Sorry! Counselor Jarvis?
Yes.
Counselor Gwynn?
Yes.
Counselor Disorder?
Yes.
Counselor Bottomley?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Vice President Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Herschel?
Yes.
Counselor Elmer?
Yes.
Counselor Forgie?
Yes.
Does the President wish to vote?
Yes, and yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, so, presentation of petitions and similar papers? Okay, would any committee like to report out?
Yeah, just me, Penny, I'd just like to say from the Fire Department's Committee, that, that, that if, anybody has any questions when I'm sending the reports, please just forward any replies to me, so I can get, give you the answer if I left something out, or you have any questions, I can answer them for you. We're getting into the thick of things now, so hopefully you find them useful, and if you have any, please feel free to ask.
Yes, Counselor Jarvis, I did send you that email last weekend, telling you, thank you so much for the highlights and sending us all the information. We went from like up in the air and what's coming next, to like, wow, everything seems pretty positive, I'm really happy, I like the direction it's going in. So, thank you for all your work and time and keeping us abreast of the situation, and I'm sure you have a good voice there as counsel and as a previous fireman, so thank you very much, I appreciate it. Okay, any other committee would like to report out? Okay, unfinished business? Old business? New business? I do want to say one thing on a new business. If you decide to sign up for the vaccine clinic, when you go in to sign up, you can see everyone that you're going to be working with. So, if you find that there are a lot of us working from council, just pick another day if you could. I do that on purpose, I try very hard, I know like Counselor Disorder is there on days that I'm there. So, I'm just trying to pop in and just look to make sure that a lot of us aren't going to all be working on the same day or anything, so just be aware of that if you do. And if you want to do it, it's one of the most heartwarming things you could do, people come in and they are like, thank you, thank you for being here. They're so appreciative of it, they're so happy, and it's a good thing to do. All right, does anyone else have any new business? Okay, so, first, yes.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm all set.
Oh, okay, so, Counselor Forgie, could you read the first readings?
Yes, thank you. City Council First Reading, March 17th, 2021, Fiscal Year 2022, Mayor Capital Budget. Authorize five-to-seven-year lease to procure an ambulance not to exceed a finance price of $295,000. Appropriate $90,000 from Fund 8402 Capital Stabilization Fund for DPW gravel crushing costs. Appropriate $35,000 from Fund 8402 Capital Stabilization for DPW yard HVAC upgrades. Appropriate $100,000 for sidewalk replacement program. Appropriate $100,000 for the highway road program. Appropriate $140,000, $145,000 for equipment and related costs of GCT expansion and customer installation. Appropriate $492,687 for the reconstruction of Sanderson Street. Appropriate $350,000 for the design and construction of a city skate park. Appropriate $50,000 for Beacon Park recreation upgrades. Appropriate $574,205 for sewer upgrades, repairs, and replacements for reconstruction of Sanderson Street. Appropriate $469,525 for water upgrades, repairs, and replacements for reconstruction of Sanderson Street. Appropriate $1,350,000 for the police station update and reconfiguration. Appropriate $200,000 for replacement of a water dump truck. Appropriate $25,000 for water rate study, asset management, and emergency response. Appropriate $91,000 for wastewater treatment plant electrical upgrades.
Okay, motions for reconsideration? And right before we adjourn, I would just want to thank everybody for working so well together and jumping in and helping each other read and do everything. Great collaboration tonight, thank you so much, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
President Ricketts? Second, Counselor Forgie? President Ricketts?
Counselor Elmer.
Elmer? Yeah, thank you.
Sorry, go ahead. Phil?
Sorry, I just had a request, I'm really struggling reading these, these documents that are sent sideways. You kind of have to turn the computer sideways, and then you can't see the whole thing. I'd rather have it small and then enlarge it, but have it facing the right way, if you could pass that on to whoever's sending these things in. That's my request, thank you, sorry to interrupt.
Oh, that's okay, good, Madam Clerk can probably speak to that. Oh, that's okay, good, um, Madam Clerk can probably speak to that.
So, so we send them in the formatting that we receive, but we will try to accommodate your request.
Okay, anyone, anyone else?
Seconds.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye. Oppose? Stay, good night.
Good night. Good night.